Not cold, not hot.
No wind.
No wind. Where were you at? Ah.
Just let me know when you are.
Yeah.
Okay.
I'm chilling.
Dan said.
That is a good day.
I would, it did, it was.
And I don't think anyone would care if you wouldn't have, because I'd have, I'd have argued on your behalf.
Yeah, we'll say it's Sunday.
Those days don't happen very often.
Oh, no.
Yeah, it changes a little bit.
It does.
Brian's head's supposed to get sixteen inches.
Anyway. Here we are.
Here we are. Well, Dan says we're moving along tonight.
Calling to order the Perron City Council meeting for Thursday, November thirteenth, twenty twenty-five. It is five thirty P M. Welcome to everyone here tonight. It's always good to have people here at our meetings. And we have Keith, Keith Naylor, go, he's going to give us our opening ceremony and lead us in the pledge of allegiance. A prayer and a pledge.
I forgot.
I don't know your entire title, so you might say it before you start. Okay. He said not to wait.
Father in heaven, we humbly bow our heads before thee this evening and we just ask for thy blessings and thy mercy to be upon us, Father. We ask for the blessings to continue to be upon this town and its citizens. We're thankful for, for everyone's joint efforts to help make Perron the thriving community that it is. Father, we ask for thy blessing and thy spirit to be with the members of this council tonight as they discuss their business. We pray for thy guidance and thy comfort. Pray for, we're thankful for members of the public who are able to be with us this evening. We pray for everyone's safe return home, Father, and we humbly ask for these things in Jesus's name. Amen.
Amen.
Stand please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, universal, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks, Keith.
Thank you. All right. Do we have any conflicts with the council or personal interest in any of the items on the agenda this evening?
No.
No, ma'am.
No, ma'am.
All right, this time is now, those of you who are here, the public comment section, you have three minutes each. If you'd like to come up and speak, just state your name and that, and the time is yours. All right, we'll move on from public comment into the consent agenda. Uh, these items are administrative and usually approved by one motion. Item number five is the approval of the city council meeting minutes from October twenty-third, twenty twenty-five, and November fourth, twenty twenty-five. Number six is the approval of the warrant register for November thirteenth, twenty twenty-five, and number seven is the approval of October twenty twenty-five financial report.
Mayor, there was, uh, one thing on the minutes, uh, I think John Dean was here and it says it didn't list him.
It's okay.
Good catch. So we need to make sure John Dean is on there where he needs to be to get his attendance recorded.
So with that change, I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda, items five through s- seven, with that one change of John Dean being present.
Oh, thanks for the motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? All right, that motion carries. Moving into the action agenda, item number eight is the Utah Arts and Museums Creative Aging Grant Award of two thousand five hundred and forty-four dollars, and Steve Decker is here to tell us all about it.
You know, I sat behind that dais long enough that when you vote, I still want to vote. It just comes naturally. I want to, um, so the, uh, Utah Arts and Humanities, nope, that's not right. Utah Arts Museums, uh, Division of the State of Utah has a creative gr- aging grant that they, uh, offer, um, entities on an annual basis. We received one last year, and that was for a figure drawing class. Uh, we applied this year and we received one again this year. This one is for a oil painting class. It'll be a six-week course. Uh, we did learn last year, it has to have a culminating event with it. We, uh, tried to put one of those together last year. It was poorly attended, so this year we're, we're, uh, combining the coordinate, the, uh, culminating event with Old Rock Church Days. So we'll show that artwork at Old Rock Church Days. Uh, it, uh, like I said, it's an oil painting course taught by Herb White over six weeks. It'll begin in mid-April and go through May. Uh, and, uh, we're taking as our subjects various things around town. I think we're calling it Painting on the Town. Uh, so we will, um, uh, have a little historic vignette at each one of them, just five or ten minutes, and say, here's the history of the Hatch and Davenport Pottery's, and then we'll use some of that pottery for Still Life. We'll do the cemetery and do a little historical vignette on the C C C camp and how that wall was built, when that wall was built. Uh, we'll incorporate several of the things around town, all of them of significance to Perron. We'll end up with paintings of the Old Rock Church. Our budget for the year is four thousand dollars. This grant is tw- two thousand five hundred and forty-four dollars. What I'm asking for tonight is, I understand we have to have a motion to accept the grant and to have the appropriate fiscal authority sign.
Okay, do we match it or anything?
There is no match here.
Okay.
There's no match. I, I hope to apply next year for one more, because I want a ceramics class next year. Uh, we've been lucky enough for two years in a row to get it. I don't know if we'll get a third, but, uh, uh, no, there is no match.
Well, I'll move to approve the Utah Arts and Museums Creative Aging Grant for two thousand five hundred and forty-four dollars.
Second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? All right, that motion carries. Thank you for your good work.
Thanks, Dave.
We're excited. That sounds really, really fun, and I think it'll be well attended. All right, we'll move now to item nine. This is setting the time for the election canvas, and this is required. It's, uh, to be on Tuesday. I've heard from one council member who would like to see that happening at five o'clock, so we just need to set a time for that, for November eighteenth of twenty twenty-five. Do we have any other discussion about a time, or do we like the idea of five o'clock?
I'm fine with five.
Five works good.
I'm the council member. I can't be here till five, so.
All right, so we would just need a motion to approve, um, the election canvas on November eighteenth at five o'clock.
I move to set the time for canv- uh, election canvas for November eighteenth, two thousand twenty-five, for five o'clock P M. Here at the city council chambers.
I second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? All right, that motion carries. The next item is, um, I kind of got ahead of myself. It's the approval of the Service Missionary Volunteer Memorandum of Understanding. It says the United States of America, because that program is a U S program with the service missionaries. Um, we had already approved a few years back of putting things that the service missionaries and public could help us with on Just Serve, and this is kind of an extension of that. I actually have a meeting in Salt Lake on Wednesday, um, to learn a little bit more about how, um, that is going to be utilized more in the future, because that's where service missionaries go to look for service projects in our area. And, um, I can update the council on the meeting on the eleventh about what I learned, but this M O U, you all have copies of it. It's in front of you. Um, I made a list of things that I thought would be kind of no brainers, um, like flags on main. We have had some service missionary help with that. Um, sub for Santa's another one. If we do park cleanup, or road cleanup, or trail work, you know, things like that, even Old Rock Church Days, um, any of those kinds of things, we could list them on Just Serve, and we could let, um, the service missionaries get involved in those things if we want to continue to work together with the Just Serve website. So with that, do you have any discussion, or do you have any questions about that memorandum?
Well, I'll move to approve the memorandum of understanding for the Service Missionary Volunteer Memorandum. And that, you say it's not United States? What is it?
It is the United States.
Okay.
They don't, they don't do it out of the country.
Okay, United States of America.
I second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? All right, that carries. Moving now to item eleven, this is our fencing code update, ordinance twenty twenty-five dash eighteen, and we have that ordinance. I think we can pop it up on the screen. We had that in our packet. Um, we've talked quite a bit about this. It's been through Planning Commission. Um, we're just completely dialing it in now and hoping that we have something we can work with that, with now that isn't as convoluted and frustrating. Do you want to cover points in it, Dan, or do you want to just open for questions?
I mean, it is, um, what we talked about. Um, the only thing that, um, I guess I would point out is really where the rubber meets the road is, just to remind the council the way it's now written. Callie, if you want to scroll down, that it is, scroll down a little bit more, little more, little more, little more, little more, right there, um, that it is in areas, um, that it is done, that it is needed, and there's a common lot lying for property used for or zoned for the other use, meaning whoever is developing, whether a property is in use or zoned, in other words, it, the, the net effect of that is, it's not the last one to build, it's the person who's building now, and it's regardless of whether it's zoned the other use or used for the others' use, use. So i- you're gonna have more fences being built with this than not, and, um, and it is a, a masonry fence. I think that's the way the council wanted it, and that's the way it's written. Everything else? Nothing really else much was of note to change, to, to discuss since we've discussed it.
Well, if there is any other discussion, I think we've discussed it enough. I'll approve the, or I thought, I'm not gonna approve it, but I'm going to move the, to approve the ordinance update, twenty twenty-five dash eighteen, the fencing code update.
I'll second the motion.
All right, is there any other discussion? Then we'll do a roll call vote, starting with council member Topham.
Rochelle Topham, aye.
David Harris, aye.
John Dean, aye.
Sharon Downey, aye.
David Burton, aye.
All right, thank you, and thanks for your hard work, everybody involved in this, Planning Commission and council and city manager. Um, moving to item number twelve is the Building Inspection Code, ordinance twenty twenty-five dash nineteen, and we have Keith here. I don't know if he wants to come up and stand at the podium. All right, do we want to start top down, or do we want to just kind of generally talk about the document?
I think we did.
Um, if you could bring it up, there's one thing I want to point out, one tiny phrase change. Um, um, go back up a little bit. Hope we got back up a little bit more. Okay, stop. Under Building Code, we have on here, Perron City hereby adopts most of recent versions of International Building Code, International Residential Code, National Electric Code, International Plumbing Code, International Mechanical Code, Devi- Department Environmental Quality Title, yada yada, National Fuel Gas Code, and the Utah Wildline Urban Interface Code as defined in Utah Code fifteen A two one oh three subsection two. Um, that was not in the, um, that was not in what was reviewed. Um, this is, it's a, it's a minor vari- vari- variant, but it is, um, but it is an addition.
Is that the wildland fire?
Yes, we are required to adopt this into our building code before January first, per new state, I think it was House Bill eighty-four. Um.
What's the acronym? Is that woo-hoo, wahoo?
Wildland Urban Interface.
Yeah.
Now, we have been waiting on that because we were told that they were going to, um, come up with a new Wildland Urban Interface Code. Um, the, the code that is there, that is referenced there is two thousand six. Um, by adopting it the way that's proposed, it would, um, it just would point to whatever is the current Wildland Ur- Urban Interface Code, thus future primping it. Um, but this is not something that was there. I don't know if you guys feel like it's as significant enough of an, of an item that we need to do a new public hearing or not.
No.
Um, this is not required public hearing, because it's in chapter eleven anyways, but it's kind of related to land use. It's something that, it's something we're gonna have to requ- adopt no matter what, even if we, even if the public says we hate it and it's a horrible idea, so, I don't know. But, um.
It helps us with the liability issue, with wildland fires.
Oh, it does. Well, yes. I mean, this is, this is mandated by, by state code, and we're gonna have, um, w- we will not be able to participate in the state, um, program without it anyways.
And we can't afford not to.
And we can't afford not to do that, so.
Yeah.
So that's, that's their stick that they hold over us if we don't play, play ball, is they say, okay, you can't participate, plus our code isn't, isn't up to speed, so. Anyways, that is the only change, um, other than reformatting and putting it into ordinance format from what we talked about in the work meeting.
Well, I'll move to approve Building Inspection Code Ordinance twenty twenty-five dash nineteen.
I'll second.
Is there any other discussion? All right, we'll go with roll call, starting with council member Topham.
Rochelle Topham, aye.
David Harris, aye.
John Dean, aye.
Sharon Downey, aye.
David Burton, aye.
All right, thank you. That motion carries. Um, moving to item number thirteen, the approval of the Axon Fleet A L P R licensing contract. And we did get that contract in our packet. Hopefully you had chance to look through that. Do you have anything to add, Chief?
Well, we just needed to put this on the agenda, because it's a five-year contract. Axon is who we use for our body cams, dash cams, tasers, taser cams, and this was the, the con, um, that extension on the five-year contract for a portion of what Axon does. Chief said it's within my budget. Do I need to bring it to the council? And I said it's a five-year contract, which binds the city budgetarily, so it does need to come front of the city council.
I had to call Nicole and ask her what that acronym was. So I'm good now.
Do you remember what it is?
I do, it's, uh.
We talked about it at that last meeting.
Yeah.
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 Any questions?
All right, with that, we'll, I'll entertain a motion to approve this.
Well, I make a motion to approve the Axon Fleet A L P R license contract.
Second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oh, this roll call? No.
No.
Any opposed? All right, thank you. That motion carries. All right, moving now into our work agenda. This is the discussion on the possible fiscal year twenty twenty-six budget amendments.
So, Aldo, do you want to come up? Um, Aldo sent out a staff report on this line item. Um, we're in a work meeting. We're not in an action meeting, so we can't take action, but when we talked about the, um, having a budget adjustment, um, regarding the potentially significant large item that would affect our operating budget about the breakwater, um, we asked Aldo to get some information, um, and we just got that, so.
Aldo, I want to say I'm impressed with this presentation. I started reading it on my phone, because I've been out moving cows. Didn't work, so I printed off, and I was surprised when I saw all of it.
Yeah, it's, it's a big document and.
And thank you, because I think you're very thorough and you're very, you hit some good points. Thank you.
That having been said, we need a little time to digest it.
Yeah.
Do you want to give us the Reader's Digest version, so the council has something to think about, or?
Yeah, so just the, uh, Reader's Digest there is, you know, we, we spoke about it here a few weeks ago. Um, we went in, so a lot of this stuff that's in this is we've already talked about a little bit here and there, but this kind of flushes those ideas out a little bit more, um, and addresses a little bit of the history of the gravel pit, what's gone on there, um, you know, kind of through the, through the phases of that. Um, but then also it talks about, um, costs for doing various treatment to the gravel pit essentially. Um, and then also, uh, what will flush out of this is kind of the council's, um, level of service that they want us to provide inside that pit. Um, so that, that's kind of the Reader's Digest. It talks about, you know, our staffing levels of public works. We don't lack for things to do, and so it, it's gonna take quite a few guys to get this done. There's some parts in there, um, that'll take all of us, in, including me, which I don't mind playing in the sandbox, but, um, but yeah, and so it just kind of burns through all of those options of, of what we can do there. Also talks about a little bit of rental equipment in there. Um, you know, it costs a lot of money. There's times when we have to abandon what we're doing with that equipment and go handle something else, and sometimes we are away from that equipment for a couple of days, even a week or so, just depending on staff and, and what's happening to us at the time, and so that's, I know there's been some pushback to some of you guys for comments, you know, about some equipment sitting, and so just kind of addresses that through there. If, if, you know, we, we take that as the cost of business to have us do contracted work and move forward at a cheaper rate coming from our crews, or if, you know, we want to go a different route on some of that stuff. So it just kind of hits all those topics, and, and as you read it, feel free to contact me if I need to do some more research into a different area, or if you've got some different ideas, we'll, we'll check that down, too. Um, last year it was kind of a trial run, um, to see if that's something that we want to continue moving forward with on that pit, and so that's why I'm back with it.
I'm just gonna say that the objectives are very crucial, and we need to be proactive and not reactive to these objectives. Underground water management plan and flood, those are crucial, and you can't just have a knee-jerk reaction to those situations.
Right, and, and, like I say, cleaning, cleaning of that pit takes some time, and so it's.
And it's gonna be ongoing. It's can't, it's not just a, a one-year thing, because that thing's gonna keep.
Yeah.
Every time water comes down, it's gonna keep filling up.
Yeah, we. Yep, and I put that in there. It's either a gift or it's a curse. You know, we have a lot of material that comes out of there, but that, so it's part of its job, but then we have to keep maintaining it to, to keep going, and hopefully, once we get down the road with some, some routine maintenance, maybe we can get a little bit ahead of some of that stuff. But it just really depends on the flood that comes in. I mean, it'll, we've all seen it do it, and we can have a big deep hole, and it's filled up in a few weeks, so.
I will say, Aldo, and I've said it before, that pit looks better than it ever has. Thank you.
Yep, happy to. And so, but yeah, reach out if you have any questions on it. There's a, there's some big numbers there. Um, I've, I reached out with, um, Goodfellow out by the airport, and talked with those guys that have ran gravel operations before, just to, to make sure my numbers are looking like what production should look like. Um, I'm being pretty conservative on my numbers, and pulled them down from a little bit of what they say their equipment can do, uh, just to be, to be on the safe side of, of what goes on. So I don't want to promise the moon on it, and then we get a truckload of material out, so I've been bouncing around on di- several different people that know more about it than I do, so, that's what we got.
All right, does anyone have any other questions right now? We can just contact you one-on-one as we.
Yeah, reach out.
Like you said, it's, it's a lot to digest, and I'm sure that we're gonna have some questions as we really look through it.
One thing I do want to bring up on there, um, it's listed before the, the financial section, I believe, the current state of the pit, of what we're in. Um, right now, there is a lot of material on the deck, that, like, what I call the deck of the pit, from this project. So something, if we really get into a mode, um, and I'm currently out of road base, so I do need to crush or buy some, but just keep that in mind. That, that deck is full of material right now, so there's really nowhere to push to, to start going, so we'd have to handle that material first as we work into it, so just keep that in mind.
Not to mention, to, as, as our portion of the bridge project, we need to source riprap. Um, there is a lot of riprap in, in that material. It's not, it's not like a cut or a jagged riprap, but if, if you do the right size, according to the engineering, we can use, um, the, the stuff that's in there, and it has been tested for hardness and it would work.
So it meets specs.
Yeah.
Okay.
The, the problem is, is it's the cost of processing.
Yeah.
The cost and time and all that stuff, so.
Yeah, big, big riprap takes some time, um, just because you've, you can't really mechanically do it, so you're gonna be running it over a, a regular type screen, and so it's just a lot of time consuming.
It's a lot of, it's a lot of loaders moving.
Yep.
Material.
A lot of good audiobook time.
Um, but my point is this, we, we, we do have budget allocated for doing that and either acquiring riprap or something, so we, we will be of necessity potentially going through that material up there for this riprap, unless we look at it and it's literally cheaper to source it locally. But, I mean, there's, there's, trucking of the material is part of one of the, the factors, purchasing the material versus using our own, and the cost of processing it, and all of that. So we're gonna be looking at that almost as a side conversation, because that's what we're already planned and budgeted for.
And also in some of those financials, I did include our labor. I mean, even though we're being paid, regardless of where we work, I, I did include the, the cost of what we are up there, so.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Aldo.
All right, moving now to item fifteen. This is a discussion regarding road typical sections and related parking code modifications with possible direction to the Planning Commission. And I just wanted to tell the council, I feel like you've been deep diving into the research on this, and, uh, really have put a lot of time and consideration and time on the measuring tape and getting to know our city better and our road widths better throughout the city, and the conclusion that I think was drawn at the end of all of that was what? Council member Dean.
Smorgasbord.
I was gonna say, no consis- no consis- no consistency.
No, no consistency. It's, and it's.
Well, our city's been built over a hundred and.
Oh, we know that.
Hundred and, I don't know how many years.
So we just, you know, how I looked at it, is it okay to talk through this? What, how I looked at it is, um, there isn't any consistency, but even the newer, I, I would say, you know, fifteen years or newer, they, they're still quite a bit different. There's only one, there's only two streets that service eighteen homes that have, I'm, I'm, I'm not talking about easement. I, I like to talk about asphalt, because that's where you have to push snow. There's only one, two streets in a residential zone that's, has fifty feet of concrete, or asphalt, I mean. So, and all the others vary from, uh, thirty-two, thirty-five feet, thirty-four feet to forty-two feet, but then the ones without curb and gutter that have pretty busy street is twenty-two feet of asphalt. So, that's just, we don't have, I guess, you know, forty people and twenty million dollars' worth of funds to asphalt the whole city again, but, uh, that's what I found out in the last two days.
So just for the record, we did update our transportation master plan, um, I believe it was last year. Does anybody remember?
Mm-hmm.
And we haven't had a subdivision approved since we did our master plan and updated.
Six, twelve, twenty-four.
And updated our typical sections.
Yeah.
So i- if you're comparing stuff to our existing typical sections, you won't find anything that it matches it exactly, because these are, these were newly adopted. Um, I just wanted to, I guess, frame a little bit the conversation and talk about policy principles as we're talking about this. Um, these are some things that we try to accomplish as the principles we're trying to accomplish, regardless of the typical section used and, and wh- in what setting. See if, see if this makes sense to you. One, we want to preserve two clear travel lanes for emergency access on collectors, arterials, everything, right? We want to have two clear travel lanes for emergency access. Everybody think that's a priority?
Yep.
Okay. Provide adequate off-street parking for the expected number of vehicles per lot slash unit. Like, that's not just necessarily a given, but the idea being that roads can, in some cases, have on-street parking, in some cases not, and it isn't always the goal to have on-street parking. You don't want to have on-street parking on a major road, right? Um, when I say major, I'm talking high-speed, I'm talking roads that, um, that have different functions. You don't necessarily want on-street parking. Um, sometimes, uh, no on-street parking is preferred or, or approved in even local subdivisions, depending. Um, we'll talk about snow and things like that, but you definitely want, the, the goal being, you want to have enough off-street parking per home, so the streets are used as extra parking. When there's more homes than the typical average, they have somewhere to go. When there's more homes than the typical average, they have somewhere to go. When you have visitors, when you have events, things like that, right? Um, a lot of people incorrectly, the, our police department deals with this all the time, think that they have control of the parking in the road in front of their house and they don't. Um, it is, if it is in the public right of way, somebody is allowed to park there and including you can park down the road from your house and things like that. But the idea is that parking on the streets is meant to be extra from parking needed for the development, whether it's commercial development, whether it's multi-family, whether it's single family residential. We want to try to have enough parking in each of those places on site. Um, we want to, whatever we do, we want to have a design for practical snow removal and emergency response. And what's practical, um, we talked a lot about that last week. Aldo's had a, a fair amount to say about it, as he should. His opinion really matters because he's, him and his crew are the guys doing it. Um, and it needs to be practical. It doesn't need to be perfect, it needs to be practical. And, um, usually, snow is when we find that there's conflict between Public Works trying to do the job that people want us to do and them trying to clear out their own property and neighbors fighting with neighbors. And snow removal is always a, a friction point, but we want to design it so that it works well. And the fourth and last thing is we want to encourage on-street parking in low-speed, low-volume neighborhood streets where curbside parking supports walkable frontages and traffic calming. This is back to that whole thing. There are certain types of roads where we don't want to have on-street parking. But we want to try to encourage the ability to park on the streets. This is a, this is a priority and principle. If you don't agree with it, then that's, then that's okay. I'm just saying, just trying to make sure we're all in the same sp- place with what we, what we think is the best for a rural city. And that is that parking on the street is, is available, it's a priority. And I think in Utah where we have more kids than the average, it's, it, it's a, it's a real, it's a real thing. We drive a lot of cars and we have a lot of trailers and we have a lot of all of these things, right? So trying to plan around that and encourage that is a priority and a principle. So those are just some policy principles. If you, if, if you disagree with any one of those, that's totally fine. That's just some trying to give us a, a, a baseline. What I am saying in this whole discussion, now that we have moved into a new subdivision environment where it is purely administrative, we need criteria-based rules in our subdivision code so that they can be administratively applied. We had the, um, flexibility in the past to leave these things fairly open and let the planning commission and city council look at a plan and decide whether they thought it made sense or not. Now, we live and die by what's in our code. So we need to have criteria-based code so that it can be applied. We can say, this is the road width based on the master plan and the road designation. And if you want to have this, then this is the criteria to get that. And then they get it, right? So that leads us to our design standards and what we call our typical sections. That is a very engineering nerdy term, but that's what we call it in the business. And these are the typical sections that we adopted with our transportation plan a while back. And I want to make sure that we are comfortable with what they are. And if we don't like them, then let's change them because developers can hold us to our own rules. So first of all, if we start off on, on the first page of typical sections, we're dealing with local street sections. These are not collectors, minor, minor or major collectors or arterials, major or minor. These are typically what's going to be found in, in the local streets in the average subdivision. Um, we have a local street section with no on-street parking in our typical section. Um, the reason we have this is because a slight, I'm going to call it a misunderstanding or we, we developed this right after they passed a law. And since then, I, this, this law's been kind of sussed out a little bit and I think we all slightly misunderstood it. The state law, in case you want to write it down or go look at it, oh, I didn't write it down. Um, I have it somewhere, I can get it to you. That it essentially says that, um, if certain conditions are met, the maximum amount of pavement that we can require a developer to put in is thirty two feet with an, with no on-street parking option. That's why we created this, to comply with state law. The, the conditions that they put in there, in the state code is, it's only for residential neighborhoods that serve single-family residences, meaning not commercial, not multi-family. Um, it has to be a local road section. There has to be two off-street parking stalls per home in that development in order to qualify for this. There has to be less than a thousand trips per day, according to a traffic study. And then here's the big one, they use an acronym called LID, Low Impact Development. And what does that mean? Um, I'm not going to get into too much about it, but it refers to a different part of state code. And that part of state code is storm drain management. And essentially, when you have certain conditions where you're using natural storm drain versus concrete and, and, and all of that stuff, so translation, if there's no curb gutter, I usually say curb gutter and sidewalk because they always go together. Sidewalk's irrelevant. If there's no curb and gutter and you instead have natural drainage wells where it's allowed to sink in and things like that, you, you basically have designated this as a low-impact development, giving the developer the right to build that road in those circumstances. We didn't quite, I think, as, as we, and I'm just going to say we, as a whole group, including our engineer and us and everything, didn't understand really the low-impact development. I specifically talked to McLean about it and he said, yeah, we all misunderstood that originally. We just assumed that, that they get the right to do this as long as i- as they have enough off-street parking, um, criteria met. The, the challenge with it is actually it has more to do with, well, those, those first four criteria are important, but the fifth one is the curb and gutter. Now, a very interesting factor of our code plays right into this. And we need under, we need to decide what we want to do. Our code, when people ask me, does the city require curb gutter and sidewalk? I say yes, but maybe not.
Should be just yes.
Because this is what our code says. And this is a problem with our code because it needs to be administrative and criteria-based and this is decidedly not. This is under subdivision code fourteen, fourteen, oh, four, oh. Under our design standards, the cat, the subsection is curbs, gutters and sidewalks. Okay? Curbs, gutters and sidewalks shall be installed on existing and proposed streets by the applicant in all subdivisions. So good so far. Except.
We.
Where the installation of such curb, gutters and sidewalk is not required by the planning and zoning commission or the city council. And the installation thereof is waived at, in writing at the time of the plat. The planning and zoning commission and city council aren't directly involved in reviewing subdivision applications. The planning commission has a public hearing, but the subdivision review committee is supposed to look at our code and apply the code. And our code says it's required except for when it is not required by two bodies that aren't involved in the process administratively anymore.
Who's on our subdivision committee?
Subdivision review committee is myself and Aldo. And, um, right now, it is Jamie Barnett, who the council put on that committee. Um, she stepped down as the chair of the planning commission. It doesn't specifically say the chair and I need to ask Jamie if she wants to stay on and if not, we need to appoint somebody else. The problem is, is administratively, that's really difficult to apply. So I have taken, and, and by the way, in fifteen, under our other qualifying supplementary stuff, it says essentially the same thing. The installation of curb, gutter, sidewalks of a type approved by Perron City Council may be required on any existing or proposed street adjoining a lot, which a building is to be constructed or remodeled. So my point is, is I, I hate the vague, the vagueness of that. We need to clean that up one way or the other. But it has been the city's policy up to this point. It was that way for a reason. Because our policy has been, if you want to build curb, gutter and sidewalk, we'll let you. If you don't want to build it, we'll let you not, as long as you have a good drainage. We, we need a good drainage plan approved, one way or the other. The problem is, is now, when it's, when it's, who, who gets to decide? Does the developer get to decide? Because it says it'll be required, except for, when it's not required, by the two bodies that aren't involved. So do we just say it's required and, and then if you want to have it not required, then we take it to the planning commission? Um, that's kind of not within the, within the spirit of the, the new law.
It probably just shouldn't say required period.
Yeah.
Okay.
It's just required.
I agree with.
There was reasons.
There was reasons why it was the way it was.
For that because there, you've got to look at where that's going to drain. If you have somebody put curb and gutter in the middle of an area that doesn't have curb and gutter, then you're just channeling that water to somebody else.
Well.
And so you've got to have a plan for the drainage.
Which we now require that they retain their own storm drain water when you do a subdivision.
A subdivision, but with an individual.
Right.
In the middle of an already established area.
And we're talking about subdivisions. The design standards in our subdivision code.
Well, that's what I understood. It was for all new subdivisions.
Yeah.
And it excluded the existing, you know, area of town that is not, does not have curb.
You've got a building permit in the middle of a block and a city block that didn't have anything. We're going to get to that. We actually have a design standard for existing sections of the city town.
Because you've got a plan for that water, that storm water.
A hundred percent agree. And we make them do that.
You just can't put it off on somebody else because you put curb and gutter in.
So we'll get to the typical section for the existing.
This isn't California.
Be careful, just.
No, I won't.
Okay, can I make a comment? So three hundred north, that, okay, three hundred west, the intersection. No drain and gutter, it's been here as, as long as you've been here probably. The, the three hundred w- north is twenty two feet wide. Three hundred west is two, twenty feet wide. If we don't have curb and gutter or something, that road keeps on getting smaller and smaller and smaller. Twenty two, twenty two feet.
Do you think curb and gutter's going to define the width of streets?
Yeah, well.
There's a difference between right of way and asphalt.
Aldo, do you want to come up and explain that? Because you seem to be confidently nodding and that would help us all better understand.
Um, having, having curb will, will back the edge of the asphalt. And so that asphalt will quit chipping away. So that's why I'm nodding, saying that will hold, it will hold the edge of the asphalt. Um, part of what Councilman Dean is talking about is a lot of people, they, they shortcut our radiuses and for whatever reason, they want to bounce through more potholes, I guess, or more bumps there on the inside. And that just chews the inside of the radiuses out, narrowing those roadways and cracking those edges off where they're not backed and have something tight to them. That's why I was nodding my head.
So with all due respect, let's get to that if we can in a minute.
Thank you.
Because we do want to, we, we did build this with the existing street sections of town in mind. What we're talking about is new subdivisions being built, right? So if our code allows, as you could argue that it does, that you're not necessarily required to put curb, gutter and sidewalk in a new subdivision, then also this typical section right here can be used in any new subdivision. This is the local street section, no curb. So if I have a subdivision application that comes in tomorrow and they say, we insist on not doing curb, gutter and sidewalk, putting us in this weird, can we approve that or not? We take it to the planning commission or city council, which we aren't involved in the approvals of that. And they approve it and they build a twenty-six foot wide path on a sixty-foot right of way. So do the math, that is seventeen feet of dirt on either side of a twenty-six foot road. That could be put in a new subdivision today because of the vagueness in our code, which was there on purpose originally, and this new state, Utah state law. So that concerns me unless that's what, the way you guys want it. Unless you're comfortable with new subdivisions in town being built out the way the existing streets of the old town are.
No, I get the new and I get the, you know, the curb and gutter on the new, but I, my concern is in the old. And I think maybe that's been addressed if I'm understanding things right.
And I'll get, there's a yet another set of drawings for the e- existing streets.
And I'm concerned about the drainage that that would cause. You know, implemented kind of a, you know, on staggering type of a construction, so.
Right, um, from a div- from a subdivision standpoint, again, we're going to.
And I get that.
We're going to have them deal with their drainage.
I get that on the new. And I get the curb and gutter tying the edges and, and things, but I also get the need to not mess with the sixty-foot right of way.
Okay, so we'll get to that too. So everybody understands where we're at and that's ultimately where we're headed in this conversation. I just wanted to point out and have everybody understand what our typical sections are right now that are approvable. One, if they can justify no on-street parking, then they can build in a sixty-foot right of way, thirty-two foot pavement width, curb, gutter and sidewalk with six and a half feet of dirt on either side. And that's what we were kind of talking about last week. We said that that's an approval and we have some developers saying you're wasting essentially six and a half feet that could be used for more affordable housing, right? And we would, right now, here's our other problem. We don't have very well-defined parking code. So how do you, if they say, trust us, we have enough parking, that we can justify having no on-street parking? We have no criteria that's definable, this metric, to say, prove it. Okay, yep, you have, you have checked off the boxes and you're allowed to get this no parking on-street. Now, what we don't have is a, is a current right of way of less than sixty feet. So what we were talking about last week, we were talking about, is there a typical section in certain conditions where we would allow a smaller right of way width and still preserve on-street parking and make that the minimum that we could go to or not? And I know that there's opinions on both sides of that. I would, and, and what I typically call, and that last thing I want to point out, what I would say our optimal solution is, what we are going to generally tell anybody who wants to subdivide what you need to do, is going to be this local street section, which we also talked about last week. And it's sixty foot, it uses the entire sixty foot. Pavement width is forty-two. That allows for two travel lanes of eleven foot, two ten-foot parking lanes, if you want to call them lanes. Um, two and a half feet for the curb and gutter, which is a big curb and gutter, and a five-foot sidewalk. Um, and then there's a foot and a half for you to put the water m- meter, um, on the outside of that. That uses the full sixty foot. That, of course, is the most expensive option for, to be developed and built when it comes to harm, home affordability. But it is the, probably, I would say, the, the gold standard of what we would put in, in a, in a subdivision. The only other thing I want to point out about this, um, not this, but you'll notice that in all of our, um, sections where we have the sidewalk, we do not have any typical sections that have anything less than a five foot. And we talked about it last time, I was just directly quoting my, um, engineer. And we talked about it last time, I was just directly quoting my, um, engineer. You can actually have as low as a three-foot sidewalk, and still pass ADA.
Mhm.
As long as you have five foot by five foot sections, every two hundred feet. And I've looked at- I double-checked that this afternoon, cause we've been talking about it with a few people. None of our typical sections have that, and throughout town, you're gonna find everything from three foot to four foot. Mostly, probably across the board, is four foot.
Four foot.
But, most of those were probably approved before we had a, um- Before we had the ADA requirements that we do, um, so.
That five-foot turnaround, i- is it considered a driveway can be a five-foot turnaround?
No, they- they won't consider it.
Okay.
I do-
So, we don't actually have any fi- four-foot sidewalks?
With five-foot bump outs?
Without- with one that's made for ADA, in town?
Correct, I don't know of any.
Yeah. That's why I was asking if-
Yeah, it'd be new.
Why, it's asking, because, you know, like the new- new sixplexes, they have three-foot sidewalks. And they have, you know, a herd of, you know-
And by the way, those are not public streets.
Okay, but it's still an ADA thing.
Right, but are there- is there a five-foot section, every two hundred feet somewhere?
No.
Other than the driveways?
No.
And Dave is saying the driveways don't count.
Okay, if they don't count, they don't have it.
Yeah, I looked that one up.
So, it sounds like they- they dodged a, uh-
A mole.
Requirement. So, um, I- so, here's the point, what do we want as our typi- typical sections? Um, if we don't require curb gutter and sidewalk, inside new subdivisions, then- then developers have a right to do a thirty-foot maximum asphalt, assuming all of those other conditions are allowed. Um, if you remember, our discussion last week, which is really what got us into this? Um, was, we were- we were looking at not a public road, but maybe a public road, depending. And, um, they, of course, came in with a thirty-eight foot right of way, with twenty-six foot of asphalt, two-foot shoulder, well, just ba- think of it as a thirteen-foot lane, two-foot curb and gutter, and a four-foot sidewalk. Um, I reached out to them after our con- conversation, where we left off, and- and they're not here, and we're not specifically talking about them, but we're talking about this- this concept of our fifty-foot section. I reached out to them, and I said, "You know, when we talked about a fifty-foot right of way, typical section, and everybody was comfortable with it? I don't know, if you- if you are, absolutely, your priority is, is these streets, these roads get taken over as city streets, I don't know if you're gonna have the votes or not. I can't tell you you're gonna have the votes, or tell you you're not gonna have the votes, but if that's a priority, you better find out if you have the votes on that, or not, first." Um- If you guys were comfortable with that, as a typical section to be adopted in certain circumstances, then it's not really that big of a deal. But after talking to a few of you afterwards, I didn't get the feeling you guys were too comfortable with this. So, not to answer the question for them, but to- to ask the question of, what do you guys wanna do, with our typical sections, our parking requirements, um, and so forth? If we wanna look at changing these, um, we need to send it to the planning commission. We probably get some input from our engineer, although I got a lot of input, and we discussed it a lot with them. Um, or are you comfortable leaving them where they're at?
Can you go back to that? Those typicals that you had, with a- a thirty-eight foot asphalt?
Oh, yeah, and- and I don't wanna finish talking without addressing Dave's concern, too.
Okay. Okay.
Let's just do that real quick. So, down at the bottom, after we get into, by the way, you get wider, on the, um, on the right of way, you get to a sixty-six foot right of way. You get wider on the, um, on the lanes, and thicker on the r- on the- everything under the road. Everything the road is built with, as you get on bigger and bigger streets, right? And then, we have a whole set of sections that show that- how a multi-use path would, if it was adopted in, cause we- cause we had adopted our active transportation plan, right before we did this. And then, we get into- There's our arterials, curb and gutter, asphalt multi-use path. Okay, then we get into existing local street section, on-street parking. We did this specifically with the intent that if you had somebody that was developing, within the old section of town, and they were gonna- they- we needed a typical section to tell them where the sidewalk was gonna go, or- or what the typical section should be, um, on an existing street, that we still had a standard, that we could point them at. Cause otherwise, you're gonna force them to do the only other standards available. You'll notice the right of way says "varies." That was very much on purpose, because our right of ways around town are, on average, like a hundred feet.
Yeah, they're huge.
Brigham Young? That's what- that was a Brigham Young thing. Um, one hundred east is a hundred and ten feet? It was actually designed as a- as a more major road, at some point in the future?
It was made to be main- it was proposed to be Main Street.
Right. And then, once you get out of the original section, uh, the lots and blocks of the city town, then you get into these no- more normal typical section, or right of ways, sixty-foot right of ways, and so forth. There's- there's a little bit of variance there. The reason why we put "varies" is, we did not want to expose ourselves to the potential legal liability of somebody saying, "Hey, your own typical section says you only need sixty-foot right of way. I want my land." We wanna preserve the right of ways we have, and we- we knew that they varied around town. We didn't want our typical section to be used against us. So, it varies. The disadvantage of that, is you'll notice that the concrete sidewalk, also is not defined exactly where it goes. Um, some cases, it's closer to the road, some cases, it's right up to the property line, and it is all over the map. Sidewalks were probably, as they were put in, hit and miss around town. This is an amenity that we wanted, or somebody wanted to pay for, or something like that, and we put one in. And there's not a lot of rhyme or reason. But, we- we put this in, you'll notice that there is this dotted line, which represents kind of a drainage swell, between the sidewalk and the, um, and the existing local street section. We also have existing local street section, with on-street parking, and a curb gutter and sidewalk. In case that- cause there are some sections of the old- of the old town, where there is a- a wider pavement width, and a curb gutter sidewalk. So, we kinda wanted an optimal there, to fit the on-street parking that it may apply to, depending on some sections of town. One hundred north, right out in front of us, it has curb gutter and sidewalk in parts of it. Some of the- some of the ones that come off of Main Street do. So, we wanted to have an optimal typical section for on-street, with and without curb and gutter. And, um, same thing, we put this on here for major, minor collectors, um, so that we could define and- and basically defend things like Old Highway ninety-one. And, so, we didn't wanna- we didn't wanna use it, have it used against us to lose, um, right of way there, things like that. And we needed a- we needed a width, and depth, and all of that stuff, to be defined, even though the right of way varies. So, I didn't wanna leave that, without talking about that point, that- that Councilman Burton had brought up. Sorry, um, John, wh- what did you want me to go to, which one?
Up to the one that's, uh, thirty-eight feet.
Subdivision one?
The subdivision, we're talking about subdivisions.
Oh, oh. This was- this was in a sub- this was in the PUD, that proposal?
No, no, it's-
No, it's from the other one.
Oh.
Just go up.
I saw it at one point.
Okay, go up, uh, eighty, fifty, thirty, forty, forty-two, forty-nine, forty-four, twenty-six, thirty-eight.
There you go.
(laugh) Well, actually, go up more, cause we don't need that multi-use path.
There isn't a thirty-eight up here.
It was just that one.
Let's go to the forty, make it easier. Go down a little bit to the forty. So, the-
Forty-four.
Oh. Forty, right there.
Here's the forty. So, this is a major, minor collector.
Okay, let's, you know-
With a multi-use path.
So, if we took away, well, f- so, we don't have a thirty-eight in there? Anyplace?
It just has a multi-path.
I thought we had one.
Yeah, just with the multi-path.
I don't believe so. Okay. So, we're talking about new subdivisions.
You're saying a thirty-eight? There is a thirty-eight on this one that I have figured out.
Is there a thirty-eight there?
Yeah, there's a thirty-eight.
There's a thirty-eight there.
Yeah, well, that's the local street with a multi-use path.
Yeah, is that what you're talking about, John?
No, keep going, keep going.
I went there, and you said, "Keep going."
(laugh) Okay, thirty- thirty-eight path, okay. So, so, we're talking about nu- the, you know, new subdivisions. What, and Aldo's still here, what would be- The i- that would be ideal, because it would have a multi-use path, in a subdivision.
Mhm.
Um- And it's on-street parking.
Mm-hmm.
Would that mess you guys up, Aldo?
For plowing, or whatever.
Like, with no residential?
For plowing? Cause it- cause it's (laugh). Here's a- here's a good question for you, and you might not know this. What street, what residential street, that has curb and gutter, in per one, is a good street for p- or acceptable street for plowing?
Um-
Sorry, put you on the spot.
Any of ones that don't have cars on them?
(laugh)
Good answer.
That's true.
By the way, this is only two feet wider than the fifty-foot right of way.
Mm.
Section.
Yeah.
In asphalt.
And, I mean, that- that's really the- the key, to a lot of these- these sections, is- is we, you know, get the cars out of our way. To- to be able to plow snow, and get those areas opened up, and so, they're- they're wide, and we have room, not only to do that storm, but also the next storms. I know- I know, snow melts down here quickly, and Dan reminds me a lot, that I'm not in Bryanhead anymore.
(laugh)
But, someday, I mean, you all remember when you were younger, there's no- that snow will stack up. And so, that- that's why we want to just preserve that snow storage area, and- and be able to put it somewhere, and not have to truck it out, or whatever future levels of service that the- the council puts on to Public Works, when these areas do spill up with snow. So, like, Maple Springs is- is a nice one, that you run through, it's big and wide, um-
Thirty-five foot asphalt.
But it's fifty-foot right of way.
Forty, so, you got, yeah, thirty and four-foot sidewalks, so.
But you just plow asphalt, right?
Yes.
Okay, that's (laugh).
Yeah, yeah, we don't- we don't plow the side- well, sometimes my guys bounce on the sidewalk, and we have to fix it, but, um, but yeah, no, that one's- that one's a good one, to go down through and plow, and get wide open.
So, that asphalt's thirty-five feet wide?
Yeah, so.
That works. This picture shows thirty-eight feet wide, so this actually would work, too.
It'd be wider.
It'd be wider.
Beautiful.
Yeah, I was surprised, when I measured my streets this last week, I had no idea how big it was, till we started going through this. And I was like, wow, it was thirty-four and a half to thirty-five on average, all the way through. And I have never thought it ever to be too small. It's never, I would say, been like, wow, our streets are horrible, it's- everyone's on- parked on both sides, you can't get by each other, it's- it's never been an issue.
You realize that the fifty-foot section we had, has a thirty-six feet of asphalt?
Which is big. That's a foot bigger than we got, I- there's- there's really no issues with that, so.
I'm ju- I'm just saying.
(laugh)
I'm not- I'm not advocating it, I'm just saying.
So, we should have something set in stone, for new subdivisions, so you don't have to say, "Maybe." It should be-
Sure.
Just hand them this, this picture.
This is what it is.
Here's your street. That'd be easy as one, huh?
Right. Oh, and by the way, the reason why we have the multi-use path, in all of these, is, A, if they want to do a multi-use path on their own, or B, if we have- if it is in a section of town, where we have a multi-use path, going through their subdivision, they have to comply with it. And if we're gonna force them to comply with it, we need a typical section that we can point at.
And can multi-use path be part of the open space?
Um, it's not part of- it's part of the right of way, which they're gonna give us anyways.
Okay.
No.
So, no.
Just asking.
No.
No.
No, they would have to put a- they would have to put, in order to qualify for open space, it would have to be something above and beyond what they would already give to us in the road.
Okay.
You talking about the AGM? What he wanted to do?
Yeah, that's a whole nother animal.
So, I guess there's a couple of things to answer, or to decide. Are we comfortable with the existing right of ways?
Yes.
And typical sections? Including a no-on-street parking version?
See, the problem with that, is you do a no-on-street parking, they're gonna park on the street.
Yeah.
No matter what, that's why I like- I just kinda don't like any no-on-street parking scenarios.
Right. You gotta have on-street parking.
So, I am not aware of a state code that requires us to have a no-on-street parking typical section.
Right.
And I feel, I confident in saying that, if we force curb and gutter.
Not force, just-
No, if curb and gutter is required.
Yes, and you get that thirty-eight foot wide-
In new subdivisions.
In new subdivisions.
Asphalt.
Because, at that point, one of the five requirements to have that state law apply, is the low-impact development, which we've taken off the table. And by the way, low-impact development is designated by the city, is the way it's written in that state code. So, if we don't have it as a typical section, and we require curb gutter and sidewalk, by definition, we haven't designated any low-impact development areas, or typical sections. Requ- therefore, you can scrub this one, off our approved typical sections.
You had to scrub it. Mm. You gotta have on-street parking.
Because they're gonna park on the street, even if it is, even if you're built-
Yeah, you- and you've gotta allow- you gotta have your sixty-foot right of ways, you can do whatever with your asphalt, but you've gotta have on-street parking, and you gotta have sixty-foot right of way.
And it'd be terrible for- to enforce it.
Well, you- you can stick with a fifty.
We also would get rid of this one here. Which is the local street section, no curb.
Yeah.
Cause it was specifically done for the idea that, yeah, if you wanna have a subdivision and don't put curb and gutter?
Yeah, just get rid of it.
We're cool. New subdivisions, mind you.
Yeah. Yeah, don't get me wrong, I- I always thought that it was required of new subdivisions, curb gutter and sidewalk.
No.
No.
I thought it was.
Can we-
Well, it is, unless it isn't.
Yeah.
Unless it is.
Well, I'm the same with you.
So, if you get rid of the, unless it isn't, then you're fine.
Unless-
But a lot of these streets, we went through the master transportation plan, and this was all calculated and things, but I think that you need to, yes, you've gotta stick to the right of ways, but you've got to have on-street parking, and you do whatever with the asphalt width, I'm not advocating on that, but, uh, and yes, it should be required of newer subdivisions.
Okay, so I guess my- my, i- cause I- I'm seeing a consensus here. Um, in order to change this, it needs to go through planning commission, and we can- we can, and should, if this is your intent, say, "We intend on changing this, and looking at it, and start the process." Therefore, if I get a subdivision application tomorrow, I say, "Whoa, we're in the middle of changing this code." And let this planning commission go through the process. Um, that's what I'm saying, if you wanna do that, we should do that tonight.
Mm-hmm.
What do we think about the fifty-foot versus the sixty-foot? Cause that's a different, but related conversation. And tying into that, I really wanted Aldo to be here, and- and bring up what he brought up, because he wants to have another discussion with a separate agenda item. I mean, he would love to have it all resolved at once, but I said, "Let's try to do this in bite-sized chunks, on a parking ordinance." Since he- since he has got here, and dealing with what we have dealt with for a long time, it has been a problem and a pain in the butt. This is not just Aldo being a diva, can I call you a snow diva? Aldo is like, if you want us to properly plow the snow, you- we should consider a- a- an- a- a parking ordinance, that in a snowstorm, you can't park on city roads. And I'm like, I- that's a conversation we can have, but it ties into this whole conversation, because it- A fifty-foot right of way is no longer that scary, if you're- if you're gonna enforce some parking. But it requires enforcement, and who Aldo calls, is the other guy sitting in the back of the room, and that's Addy. Because when they- when they're out plowing, and you got a car there, he says, "Hey, I got a car, can you go give him a ticket?" So, I mean, it's a bigger conversation than tonight.
Than they do, and they do.
I know, I'm just saying, you're gonna have more of that, if we are trying to do that citywide.
So, explain that, because we talked about it, it would be like a November fifteenth to an April fifteenth.
That's, that's, that's an option, so, if you look at, if you look at Logan City, um, that's who I got the, this program from, or lo- was looking at their program. Um, they're similar to our altitude, similar snowfall, um, and what they do is, is from November fifteenth to March fifteenth, I believe, um, no parking on the streets from midnight till six AM. Um, and I know it, they enforce it, because I had a ticket when I was going to college, and a boot on a car another time that we tried to sneak through. So, um, that, that was a, an option that we were talking about if, to, to be able to do this, and I'd, I'd, whether we go to fifty or not, that's something that I'd like to do. My guys won't necessarily like it, cause that means we're plowing pretty early in the morning, which is fine with me, cause I like to get on it before there's traffic. Um, and so, that, that would allow us to get in, get most of these streets opened up. Um, if it continues to snow through the day, we're cycling again that night to do our pushbacks to clean up, so residents would only have a rick out in front, you know, that's not clear to the curb for a little while, and then, that night would be back again, pushing it, have, making them shovel those driveways one more time after we clean up. So, that, that's something that we can kinda look at, I, I understand, you know, also, the, the short staffedness of, of other departments all across, so it's, it's something that's a, a, a different idea, different, different program, that we can try to, to help do some of this stuff.
Okay, you were saying citywide.
Right.
So, are you talking about the original homes that have no sidewalks, that have like in foot or?
Or just curb gutter and sidewalk, huh?
Yeah, see, those ones would probably be all right, and, but unless they're right up to our asphalt, you know, like, I don't know if we wanna say nothing within ten feet, you know, or, and which they shouldn't be, cause cars can fly off the road and hit them anyways, you know, kind of a, kind of a thing. So, that's something that we would have to come up with some sort of a deal, that's, that's basically.
Because you're not gonna plow that dirt or the rock, whatever.
No, no, worst, worst thing we would do is hang it and kick it off just a little bit, so, off the bed.
So, we just need to specify that to the public, which roads they are.
Yep, they. Yep, and so, we can do that with a map and map them, but I, I do think that we need something through the, the old section that says, you know, a little more ways off the road if, if you can, with that basketball hoop or that camp trailer, whatever they got out there. Um, you know, the, the other thing that they enforce is where it does run from November fifteenth to that, March fifteenth, regardless of snow. There's no, there's no give and take there, if you're on the street, you're gonna get hit regardless of snow. So, that's something for the council to take into consideration if we move forward on, on that, when we write the proposal, um.
So, again, we're not gonna decide that tonight, but it's, you can see how it ties in.
Mm-hmm.
It does, but I think we're gonna get a lot of phone calls and everything else.
We'll get some pushback, for sure.
Well, the first time Aldo said it to me, I was like, wow, you wanna start a war with a bunch of people, that's a good way to do it, and he's like, "What do you want? Do you want, you want them to complain, cause we're pushing snow in their driveway and pu- pushing neighbors' snow into neighbors' driveways? Or do you want us to plow the roads right?" It's a, it's a, it's a healthy conversation to have, and I was like, "Yeah, let's have a conversation."
And it, and it just, it, once again, all comes back to.
Cause we get a lot of comp- complaints every time it snows, because we didn't do it right, and somebody plows all their snow out into the street, and then it gets pushed into the neighbor, and then they call us, wanna go to war over it, and, and it, they, or else they just get it done, and then we come along to plow, and, yeah, it's.
Dude, it's snow.
It's snow, it's gonna always lead to a lot of things like that.
And so, that, that's the other thing, I kinda wanna flush this out, is, is just what is our snow removal? You know, we make a pass through there and call it good, and we do Peregunna style, we don't plow at all, you know, kind of a thing, we just, you know, how, I, I.
I'll do my street.
Yeah, we take care of Dave's first thing, we.
I say, "Just stay off my street, I'll do it."
Everybody down there, so, but yeah, I mean, just we, we sort those out, and then, when the public calls in, we say, "We'll, we're, we're plowing to X policy as directed by the council," kind of a thing.
Amazing. Okay, so, we'll send this to city, send this to Planning Commission, have them weigh in on, with these, with the intent to kinda plug this hole, if you will, get rid of the no on-street parking options.
How, how is the city handling in the past? If you split a lot, you now became a subdivision, how are they handling, and they kept telling you how to do curb gutter and sidewalk? How are they handling that?
So, minor lot subdivision, you can forego about everything in there, your, your goal, your goal is to do all of the, the minimum required things from a, from a state, from a recorder, from a, um, everything that the city needs for utilities and stuff like that. But we are basically allowed to color outside of the really specific in, in concrete lines on a minor lot, that's how.
Yeah, cause that's been a challenge.
By the way, a minor lot has gotten, I think it's now three or less, either it's, either that or it's four or less, and that's why I remember the name, or less than four, I'm remembering three for some reason. It is not anymore, it used to be.
One lot split.
Less than ten was a minor lot, but now it's smaller than that.
I think it's three.
Pretty sure it's three. Meaning, three is still a minor lot, four is bigger, yeah.
Any other discussion on this before we turn it over to Planning Commission? Anything, anyone else wants to voice concerns, or?
Well, I don't know why you couldn't even maybe suggest if they did a thirty eight foot asphalt, for say, and did two foot curb and gutter, four foot sidewalk with the path.
Yeah.
With the five foot every two, two hundred feet, give that as an option.
Should we send it to Planning Commission, let them kick out everything around, come back with a recommendation?
Yep.
Okay.
Let them kick.
All right, it's a healthy conversation, and I appreciate everyone preparing for this, because I know it's been a hot topic, and I've heard from, I think, everyone on the council in the past couple of weeks, I think, I think Dan has too, so, thank you.
I'm gonna send it back to you.
Um, the next thing is our reports and updates, and we will start with Councilmember Burton.
Uh, all the, let's see, all the committees, it's pretty much canceled, Planning, Zoning, Water Board, but Historic Preservation did meet, and they approved, uh, got the wrong notes. They approved a new sign upgrade for the shops behind La Via and the Mercantile, Carlisle English, and they re-approved some restoration on the neon signs on the Jim on Main. And I think that's about it that I have.
All right, thank you, Councilmember Downey.
And I have nothing, cause I've been gone for a while. I've been visiting.
All right. Councilmember Dean.
Um, met with the Police and Perrone Prevention Coalition and discussed some things with them, uh, a couple of weeks ago, and, uh, thank you, Mayor, for reminding me about that meeting, because I was on my e-bike (laugh) in the middle of the valley, so (cough), I was ten minutes late, so, sorry. Um, and then, I think that's it.
Do you wanna talk about, um, meeting with est- with, uh?
Well, that's another can of worms.
Just that it's coming up.
Oh, okay, so, I met, well, I met with, um, what's the first, uh, Kristen Robinson about Meeks Pond, and, um, that maybe an opportunity to rewrite that deed, uh, that expires in two thousand four.
Conservation easement.
Sorry. And, um, to have some options out there, um, cause there is, right now, you know, we, we just plowed up, um, you know, just a bunch of weeds and stuff in the big open area, and then the upper deck where the fire was, uh, the city's actually cleaning up that. And I had some (cough) interest with, uh, some citizens, uh, quite a few citizens about, uh, a community garden, y- you know, I had some feedback of, they tried that a few years ago, and it didn't work, but there's, you know, new blood in town, that really thinks it would be a great idea. And, and I've heard pros and cons on both sides, but the biggest thing is just that big open area, um, to, uh, consider, uh, where all the trees are along, what's that? Yeah, they, you know, where.
Perion?
No, it, where Ron Roth planted all those trees.
Oh, yeah.
To, uh, from that to the lo- pond is to put a grass area, um, just to, you know, first, cut down the weeds, and mowing, you know, every other week is probably a lot better than trying to manage weeds. And, and then, the community garden, like I expressed to the people that are interested, you know, the city doesn't have extra funds for that, so, it would be a actual community garden, where they would build the (cough), the garden boxes, have drip irrigation, and, uh, so, i- it's just, you know, it's, it's in the infant stage right now, so hopefully, uh, I'll meet with the Heritage Foundation and.
Well, and I didn't wanna, sorry to, to surprise you with that, it's just that where we la- last left off is, we've gotta look at that conservation easement before we.
Yes.
Consider these things, and, and they're open to looking at it. The conservation easement is from us to them.
Yes.
They're the grantee, so if the grantee is willing to modify it, then, then, then we can really start talking about stuff.
There, you know, Heritage Foundation's really just interested in the cabin and there's, uh, fence, that, you know, old pioneer fence that's around that cabin, and they thought, it, well, Kristen anyway, thought it was a pretty good idea, so, hopefully, we'll move forward with this and see where it goes.
Thank you. All right, Councilmember Harris.
Uh, we didn't have any committee meetings, but Mexico was a lot of fun. So, I recommend that.
All right, Councilmember Toppin.
Okay, so, this is to do with the fire department, um, I know that Dan did share an email from Chief Cavalieri, but I thought it was important that we tell the public all the wonderful things as well. Um, they have, Brad Benson is helping as a training officer, and getting them all up to speed, doing a lot of different trainings. They have had four new volunteers, um, two were ones that had left, had, that have come back, which is awesome. And then, they are still working out issues with their, um, equipment, like their radios are super complex, they need to figure out a way to make those less confusing to use, um, so you're easy, you just know how to use them really easy. And then, he has gone through all of the turnouts, they had a bunch of, I didn't even know the fire department had an upstairs or an attic, or whatever you'd call it, um, he's cleaned that all out, make that look all nice, and he's washed all of the turnouts, um, so we've got some spares there for other volunteers that come. He's like, "Don't get too excited, there's like thirty of them out there, but they're not all in great shape," so, he's still gonna go through all of those. And then, they did do a training where they took out the ladder truck, it was a joint training, I believe, with Bryanhead and probably Peregunna as well, where they took their ladder truck and put it up, um, behind the, the new motel, or the hotel, out there, and they said that that was a lot of fun to do that training. And then, this is like the icing on the cake, just so that everybody knows, and I know everybody was excited about this, but the fire department and the Perrone Strong, they kinda all came together, and they did that big fundraiser at the high school, if you guys remember, where they did the big dinner, for, uh, the two families that have, um, the one little kid, Blaine, is fighting leukemia, and then Carter Level, who is, sorry, I get very emotional, cause I know these kids personally, um, who is fighting a rare seizure disorder. Um, our town raised thirty thousand dollars for those two families. Sorry, I just get super emotional. Try not to cry, but, man, shout out to Perrone, coming together for these two families is just amazing, and I know that they split that money between those two families, and what a huge blessing that's gonna be for them, and, gosh, I just love this community, so, that's a laugh.
Thank you. Dan, what do you have?
Um, and I think I've talked about this before, um, this is not a Perrone project, but, um, we've been made aware of it, just wanted to share that, uh, Utah Division of Forestry, Fire and State Lands, combined with Division of Wildlife Resource, Sources, Color Country Field Office of the BLM, NRCS, Cedar City Rangers District, and Dixie National Forest are working together to do some, um, forest management, um, that'll be happening up the canyon. They're gonna be thinning, um, lopping, piling, um, they're gonna work on, um, some of the, um, different riparian stuff, they're gonna do work around Five Mile Campground, they're gonna be removing pinion and juniper species, um, and, and all of that, um. They, I, I do have a map, which I can share, again, not our project, but they are going, either they've gone out to bid, or they're going out to bid, here, let me just show this little map. If we wanted to, we could maybe get them here, talk about it, maybe it's, maybe it's too late to get them here. Um, kinda hard to, to read, so, in the, the blue areas, this, this is a four.
You're gonna have a hard time getting them here until they get caught up now.
(laugh) They're busy. Um, we're, we're, we're quite happy with the work they're gonna be doing, especially in and around the Five Mile. Um, the green is they're gonna cut prune and hand pile, yellow is lop and scatter, and blue is riparian lop and scatter, and, um, that's, as you can see, all around in areas that we care a lot about. And this is not, from, from what I understand, chaining or things that sometimes people get worried about, it's a very precision done thing to manage the forest, which, um, is generally speaking, uh, usually a pretty good idea.
Man, I just wanna interject, this'll do more for our watershed and our underground water recharge management plan than anything, even our recharge.
How many gallons of water do those trees drink a day?
Yeah. Yeah, our, historically, the, since they've started monitoring stream flows, our stream flows have consistently declined for over a hundred years, and it's because of this choked up watershed throughout the state.
So, if anybody asks, that's going on, it's not a city project. I know that it, sometimes there's politics involved with it, but (cough) this guy is excited about it. Um, can we just have a moment of silence to celebrate or cheer about the government reopening and our projects that have been on hold? I was watching, I don't ever watch TV, and the last thing I do is watch C-SPAN or anything, I watched the vote last night from my office computer, it was like, whatever it was, and I cheered when it passed the House, and of course, then President Trump had a big signing in his office. So, I have been reaching out to everybody, let's get these things going, and, um, I've been told that now they're hoping to advertise for the bridge project on the twenty ninth. There, everybody was jumping on it, cause they have to redo a few things, tweak a few things, um, in order to do it, so, the twenty ninth is the tentative date that they're trying to hit on advertising for construction, on that, that's the, that's the construction advertising.
How long is it out for bid?
I, we haven't seen the timeline, but what I was asking is, when is it gonna hit the papers? And they, they told me the twenty ninth, and I think they leave it open for three weeks? I don't know, we'll, I'll give you the exact thing when I know it.
It's just curiosity, it's.
Yeah. Um, the EDA grant, of course, was also on pause, and I reached out today and said, "Trent, are you there?" Cause, cause we've been shouting into the void, he, he didn't, couldn't even answer his email, and he's like, "Yes, I'm here." Uh, our, our world's been turned upside down, but we're getting to work, and we sent him all of our stuff, because this is the, this is the grant, um, person at the EDA that will, will go through all of our documents to make sure that we have a complete application, and he has all that stuff, we scheduled a meeting with him next week to review everything, and if he gives us the green light, says, uh, all of our ducks are in a row, we'll, we'll apply. I'm just super thrilled about that. Um, I don't have, maybe Aldo does, a, a projected finish date on our water pipeline project, do we know? We're getting right to the end of our thing, I'm wondering if, you talk to these guys all the time, if they know when they're gonna be expected to be done.
Yes, right here soon, we did our first final walkthrough, however you wanna call that, and created some punch lists, um, so, the project, they're pretty much cleaning up here and there with a couple of things, we've got a few, few items that, that didn't quite finish the way we wanted them to, that we're going back and addressing those. Um, some of it had to do with existing utilities, and they're already there, and so, we had to modify as we're running, um, installing that stuff, and so, okay, we've got a few things that we gotta correct, and we'll work on, on those, um, not necessarily the contractor's fault, it's just kinda the nature of the beast on some of these, some of these items. Um, but we're, they're gonna be looking to finalize that probably within the next week or so.
Okay, good, w- I have to give a final report and pull. Okay, good. W- I have to give a final report and pull down the final money on that million dollar state grant? And I think we have until December fifteenth or December thirtieth. And I was like, feeling like we're good, cause we're gonna essentially report, we spent their million bucks on the pipeline portion of the project. That's the way I'm planning on writing it.
And it's, like I said, there's just a couple of things. I mean, they've, they've.
There's no way it's gonna extend past the end of December.
No, they've already started mobbing most of their crew out. They've got a couple of guys here that are just tidying, tidying things up. Everything's pretty much done. They're actually, on the next portion of that, they're gonna have a couple of guys stay here and start grubbing and stuff up at the, the structure.
The diversion project.
Yep, so they're just gonna keep kinda chipping away at some of that stuff that they can do before the, the winter, the winter's mount or however that goes.
Okay.
Yep.
So, uh, speaking of that, we have been, we're, we're almost finished with design work on, from Jones and DeMille, on our tie-ins to the bridge project. Um, which, all of these are all kind of, all three of these projects are all related. And, um, we've been going back and forth with them on exact riprap design and, and channel design and, and all of that stuff. So, um, that's something that we're gonna work on. That's almost done. When we're done with that, I'll share that. If you're interested, it's just kind of a part and parcel to the bridge project. Um, uh, there was one other thing I was going to share. Oh, everybody may have noticed that we have two new gas stations. Uh, Terrible's was given their, um, C of O this last week. And Maverick was given their C of O this morning.
Yeah, they're opening tomorrow.
C of O, what's?
Certificate of Occupancy.
Okay.
There's a few issues that we had a miscommunication with and they're resolving those. Specifically a fence to keep the sheep out of Maverick. Scott Stubbs and I have, I know Scott well, but him and I have been getting to know each other a lot in the past day or two. We really don't wanna have sheep running around on Maverick or out on our roads. And so, he asked me a question today that I did not know the answer to, and I don't know if it's in our code. He said, what does the city code read? Is it a fence in or fence out on agriculture? Cause in the county, it's, you're required to fence out agriculture. In other words, you fence your own property if you don't want somebody's range animals to come on your property. And I said, I would guess that it's a fence in, inside city boundaries, but I don't know. Scott?
Mm-mm. It's a fence out.
It's fence out?
Yes, it's, it's state code unless the city has, has specifically put that in there.
But what have we put, specifically put in? Do you know? We're gonna look it up.
I don't think we.
And I thought, hey, we have our new, we have our new fence ordinance, let's take it out for a spin.
So it.
Doesn't apply, because it's, it's commercial use or zone and it's commercial to commercial.
It reverts to the state law if you don't have anything. County has the right to, uh, adopt or rescind it. And our county is a fence out.
Yeah. Anyways, it's getting resolved and they had an agreement and it, there was just some confusion. But they're having grand opening tomorrow. They've already got their C of O. And they will be doing the east side modifications to the interchange in the spring. They've gotta bond with UDOT to do that.
Scott, they should be asking you, not me, this interpretation of the.
I concur with your analysis, assessment and reading of the law. You're correct.
David Burton's squ- Esquire.
Fence out is the best.
That's all I have, mayor.
Well, I would just say they were close on that race to the finish. They were only, what was, Terrible's giving it on Friday.
Well, Maverick wanted theirs on Friday, but there was a, a even bigger issue, which wasn't resolved and they weren't happy about it, but.
Yeah.
It is what it is.
That was nuts. Um, so out of that experience, I'm just gonna touch this. I am exhuming this body. It was never dead, but I'm going to exhume a body tonight. When I pulled out a family dollar and saw how lit up that Terrible's was, I do think we need to start talking about some dark sky ordinance. Um, we haven't talked about it since we talked about billboard, but you guys know I jokingly said, we can't even see the northern lights now because we've got too many lights. I think we need to revisit that, so I'm just like hitting you guys with it so you can be thinking about it.
So we can see the northern lights the next time they come?
It's just because.
Instead of have to drive clear out to the middle of nowhere where there is no light. That's what I had to do.
Yeah.
I wish we would have liked, for five second, not five seconds, five minutes. Oh, I'm sorry, the power just went out. And a dark sky, and we could've seen it.
Yeah.
I saw them fine from my house.
Did you? Anyway, just, uh, it, it just has been a, a topic on my mind and when I saw that, the, I mean, we're right by the highway with those, that's one thing. But we've got a, a lot of opportunity, I think, here to explore that and decide who we wanna be as a city. Um, the second thing is the Old Rock Church days, they group met together and they were, um, excited to come up with a solution, which is Old Rock Church Days is going to, as far as I know from now on, is gonna be on, uh, the statewide Pioneer Day, which will be July twenty-fourth. So all those efforts, those people, those, all the things that happen will, you know, combine their work and combine their, uh, food and pie stuff and, you know, the auction and the selling things and the booths and the artisan stuff. It's all gonna happen on July twenty-fourth this year, which I think is really smart because people were really working really, really hard. And they were like, if we don't get someone to relieve us, we're not gonna be able to keep doing it. But then when they met and decided they could all do it together, it really started to be wonderful and joyful again to think about how we could work together and do that. I didn't tell Steve that, but I, I think he might know. Sounds like we're gonna have a oil painting exhibit and a history walkthrough. He said, paint in the town, and I was like, why not just paint the town? I, I was like, t-shirts, everything. That's so cool. I love what they're doing with that, with that art program, with that aging creatively. I think that's gonna be a really well-attended six-week oil painting course. Um, the other thing I wanted to update on is the Old Rock Church steeple. I got through, like, seeing all the roof coming down and then somebody, I'll just say who, Jerry, was like, are they gonna take down the shingle off the steeple? And I was like, yeah. And then I woke up in the middle of the night and was like, I, I'm pretty sure it was on the bed. And then I found the bed first thing in the morning and they called it a turret. So I had to look up turret, which is like on a castle, looks like that, but it also means the steeple. And then sure enough, the next day that came down. Well, funny story, when the shingles were coming off the roof, I went over and was gonna collect a bunch of them so we could make like some commemorative keychains or maybe some commemorative Christmas ornaments. But as we looked at them, they really weren't that old and they, they weren't that cool. I mean, so I gathered some and I was like, oh, they're kinda dirty. Not that that wasn't a good deal when it happened. It was wonderful for everyone who participated. They just weren't that old. But then when they took them down off the turret, they were so cool and so old. So if you wonder why the whole back of my car is full of shingles, I just started stuffing them in my car. And I, uh, some, talked to some woodworkers today, but I'm super open to ideas. I think commemorative ornaments or commemorative keychains, because we're gonna have an ongoing need to maintain that building and those old shingles have a ton of character. And I'm sure, I would, I'd be surprised if those hadn't been up there a lot longer, cause they look totally different. Um, I did get the update from Stout. I was asked to make sure we were gonna be out of weather and he's, this was just at five-thirty. He said, hey, mayor, I think we're on track. We've had a few snags along the way, but we'll be wrapping up the whole upper section tomorrow. There might be a few details to do on the lower roofs left by the end of the week, but things will be watertight. So anyone worrying about that building, um, it was the backdrop for the flag retirement ceremony. So that was kinda not beautiful, but it was neat to still see the work. And then same with the Veterans Memorial. It was the backdrop for the Veterans Memorial, but it's neat to see that happening. The shingles are sitting there, the new ones, and if you pick them up and look at them, it's, you can tell we're gonna be set for a long, long time on that roof. And that's exciting. Um, the other thing is the enhanced crosswalks. We did get the signs from the Prevention Coalition. They're really neat. They say great messaging about basically like teach your kids not to drink and use drugs. And I think that they'll see, uh, the community will see those as they cross these enhanced crosswalks. We did get the crosswalk lines painted. We've just gotta go now and instens them and put the crosswalk, um, signs up. But those pedestrian crosswalks all the way to Maverick will now be enhanced. And we also have Center and Main enhanced and Main and Two Hundred enhanced. Um, so just watch for that. It's gonna be, it's gonna take shape here. And, and you're gonna see ram crossing and you're gonna see, I think, enhancements that are gonna make a difference on our pedestrian safety.
Well, we couldn't do it on Main Street, right?
Right, right. The last, oh, two more things. The pickleballers, I was at a social outing and we talked about money and we do still have that fifty thousand dollars plus an anonymous donation, uh, a little bit more. And even in the group I was talking to, was it more courts, was it lights, was it bathrooms? I mean, we're gonna have to figure this out, but we have still some opportunity there. We also still have our app tax to sort and committee to pull together and I'm not sure where we're at on timeline. I'm not gonna hit Dan on the fly on that, but we've got some things to work out. But just know that that money and that project is still, you know, is still moving. And then the last piece I wanted to mention is the UDOT changing the speed limit to a lower speed limit coming into town from the highways. Specifically, people are concerned about Two Hundred. Um, when we met with Matt Rhodes, he said, I think we're just gonna be able to do it. But when he took it back to the higher ups of UDOT, they said, we are gonna have to do a speed study. So they're gonna do a speed study over the next two months. They're gonna come back. He said, check in with us, uh, before Thanksgiving. We'll see if we'll be able to come and present. But, um, if you wanna talk to the person that is gonna be helping us, I can give you his number. It's Cody Marchant. And you can give your input on what you think, but he and I talked for like an hour and a half and he just said, you, you're basically in a line of people that have been concerned. So we've heard and heard and heard. So your city's not gonna have to pay for it. We're gonna do the speed study for you and then we'll come back with recommendations.
Well, at nine o'clock this morning, it was a bunch of traffic coming into town.
Yeah. I can just share it with everyone. So if you wanna give him input, they haven't scheduled it yet, but it will be happening very soon. Um, and I think that is every, oh, Winter Wonderland is in progress. If you see people working, stop and help them. They're gonna have volunteers over there tomorrow and on Saturday. They're trying to get ahead of the weather, but, um, you know, obviously, uh, many hands make for light work. So it'd be great to, just even if you can get out and help for an hour or two, you have a good, like to decorate for Christmas and have good ideas. I think they're excited to get as many people involved as they can. And shout out to Perilone Power, everyone probably saw our Christmas decorations went up today. So it's beginning to look a lot like Christmas, which I don't know if that makes Rochelle as happy as Halloween. But, most people like Christmas more than Halloween, so it's exciting. Do you have anything, sir?
I don't, mayor. Thank you.
Okay. Do you have anything, Callie? Okay, do you have anything, those of you who have stayed? All right. With that, we don't have it closed unless someone's gonna blindside me. And with that, we need a final motion.
I move to adjourn.
A second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.